All right. I've used this official gavel that was given to me that says Mayor Suprema Rodriguez. Thank you. Very sweet. I'm calling the Willetts City Council meeting to order on this November 9, 2022 at 6:31 PM. And if you'll all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Such a big crowd tonight. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Strong here.
Barely.
Gonzalez.
Present.
Stransky, yes, I'm here.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Present. All right. Our first order of business is public communications. The city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council? Seeing none and hearing none, we'll move on to other matters. We have no public matters and no enactment of ordinances before us, so we'll move forward to the consent calendar. We have two items. We have the city council minutes of October 12 and October 26, as well as a resolution to ratifying extending for an additional 30 days approving of continuing virtual city council commission and committee meetings pursuant to AB 361. And some might ask why item 5B is on there. Do you want to give us a reference?
Yes. So staff reached out to the council. We need to schedule or we have scheduled a special meeting for November 28 to handle least one specific item, and that was going to be conducted virtually. So we had had the 361 resolutions lapse, so this fits in nicely. So if the council approves it, we'll have that in place, and that gives you the green light to meet virtually on the 28th of November at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Any questions or comments from councils? No? Anybody from the public? Okay.
I still move.
I will second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
And Mayor Rodriguez. Yes. All right. Motion carries. Monthly activity reports, business license activity for October 2022 is included in the agenda packet. We have no commission, agency, and authorities business before us today, and so we'll move on to the city manager reports and recommendations.
I have no specific action items for your consideration. It's just a couple of items I just want to announce to the public. So there's been some good effort made, both through staff coordination and our assistance with the California Coastal Commission regarding the removal of the rolling stock of that old railroad cars and engines on the north people, on the north of where the scuntrain depot is currently. The Greatwood Redwood Trail Board last week approved upwards of $10,000 to at least start the process due to conduct abatement of hazardous materials in those units. We are also looking at working with a scrap facilitator or an entity that comes in and removes scrap material for the monetary value of the recyclable, the valuable metals. We believe everything pencils out. The city's going to be helping with that. We're going to bring in a couple, at least two roll-off containers to collect the non-recyclable materials. And then from that point, they're looking to be on the scene for about a month scrapping everything, and that's just a public nuisance that needs to go away. We have a great contact, Louisa Morris, at the California Commission there. She's very active in this program and wants to see it done. Is there any questions from the public? That's what we're looking at. Another item that kind of looking at coordination between different entities, we have been reached out or the county has reached out to the city to help facilitate a grant program through FEMA for a pre-hazard mitigation grant for Brook Trail specifically to do a fuel reduction and improve some of their components up there relating to wildfires. There's an opportunity to fold the city's program of the airport and then the surface water treatment plant because we have identified that those facilities would be in need in case there's a situation up at Brook Trails. And that fits nicely into other items that we're looking at with pre-re removal to bring that airport fully in compliance with FAA and Caltrans guidelines. And then what we just experienced back in September with wildfire activity at the watershed. Our facility was at risk. We are doing a very strategic tree removal program, but this one would widen out that element. So let's see. One other items, just a quick note, the county cannabis program that we have discussed, which are relocating to the vacant upper stories, the second story of the Justice Center, they will be operational to the public on November 28. So the next two weeks, they will be closed and they will be relocating their staff to the facility. So we've been coordinating with the county on that, and we just got a notice that they're going to be shutting down some IT tomorrow. We just got that quick notice this afternoon, but everything is going well. Questions?
They're going to be shutting down some IT?
They need to upgrade their internet connection to the second story of the Justice Center. So it comes into one point and it gets spread throughout. They're going to shut down basically the connection at the Justice Center as a whole. So that I'm looking over to Chief Lozurager. He's going to experience a IT shutdown, at least on the internet side. And then the way the system works, it's going to cut the connection of the signal to Public Works Engineering, potentially the museum and library.
Basically, it's also going to shut down our dispatch. So for 10 to 30 minutes, we're going to have Ukiah take over for phone calls and stuff like that and dispatch that way. We've done it before when they're under emergency situations. So it should be a seamless thing, but I certainly appreciate a little bit of notice, but that's the way we work.
So, yes. You know, growing pains with the county moving into being our new neighbor. There's some other items that we've been working with the county with dispatch. Those are ongoing, but this is more of an immediate need, and it looks like it's going to be about a half hour, 45 minutes of downtime. And like I said, the way it's, the system is balanced or bridged from the tenor, the antenna on top of the Justice Center, to the museum, and then to engineering, and then to the wastewater treatment plant. All that's going to be offline for at least 30 minutes. So that's what I have.
Did you say we will know a time or we will not?
Between 9:00 and 9:30. That's what we're hearing tomorrow.
Okay.
We asked them to do it as early in the morning as possible because that's for overtime, but 9:00 and 9:30 goes to Lake Abilston. We'll work here.
And we're just putting together items, so there's going to be one meeting. We mentioned the special meeting on November 28. The only meeting in December right now is the regularly scheduled meeting on the 14th, and the agenda items are starting to come in for that.
Okay.
Okay. That's what I have. Thank you.
All right. Any follow-up questions? Okay. All right. Moving on to item 9A, discussion and possible adoption of the Willetts Urban Forest Management Plan. And our presenting staff member will be our Community Development Director, Dusty Dooley.
Mayor, would you prefer me to sit here or go up to the?
I think so that our home viewers can watch. Probably the podium would be best.
Plus, you would be mic at that location.
I can speak pretty loud. Happy to be here. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Great to be presenting finally our urban forestry management plan. This is a long-term management plan to maintain, preserve, enhance, and restore our urban forest. This project is being paid for by a grant that was awarded by CAL FIRE. The grant not only paid for this plan, but also the installation of the street trees that you see on Main Street, Blosser Lane, and Dog Park. So very much grateful and another thank you to CAL FIRE. Just council's aware, we've been talking about this plan for a little while, but for those at home that are staring at my back right now, when we talk about urban forest, we're not talking about, you know, creating 20 acres of forest land. What we're talking about are our street trees, the trees in our park, the trees on private property, both in residential settings, certainly in commercial settings as part of the landscaping there. I do want to note that this plan is consistent with the goals that this council established. So one of the goals you have is work towards Willetts becoming an environmental model city by reducing the city's carbon footprint by 50%, promoting greater energy independence from utility companies, and strengthening the city's resiliency and self-reliance. So, right? So you're reducing energy bills by having the shading, by blocking the wind. You're, you know, creating more resiliency for our community through promoting these trees. You're absorbing carbon dioxide. You're slowing down the release of stormwater and a number of good things to increase our city's resiliency. Also in there is becoming a Tree City USA, which is a subset of the goal that I previously just mentioned. Within your packet, you've got quite a bit of information to review. You have the staff report, the resolution, the agenda summary, the typical information that we'd like to provide you, as well as the actual plan itself, the technical assessment, which is essentially us showing our homework. And you might notice in there is a sample municipal tree ordinance. We have a graphic that shows the tree maintenance responsibilities in a number of common settings, both in English and Spanish. We purposely misspelled one of the council members' names just to make sure they're reading the packet, and I'm glad to say that they did catch that, so we will make that change.
That was the Easter egg that was implemented in there.
And, you know, certainly having a plan is important, but it doesn't do much use to us if it just sits on a shelf and collects dust. So there are a number of action items that are in there, and certainly we will, staff will work with our city manager to develop a plan as to when we can start delivering some of those action items to the council. So we have a good start by creating the municipal tree ordinance. There's an amended street tree list. Heritage Tree Ordinance is something that we could potentially look at creating, modifying landscaping standards for both for private and public development. So, you know, staff is certainly aware that coming up with a plan is only half the battle at most. So with that, we have Abby, our consultant with DUDEC, that's with us virtually behind you. And she's here to present a PowerPoint and provide a overview of the plan, provides some, highlights some key findings of the plan, as well as go over some changes since this last but before council. Turn over to Abby.
Thank you so much, Dusty.
We can't hear. Are you ready to begin because we can't hear you?
Yes, perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. I'm thrilled to be here today, and thank you for the introduction, Dusty. Excited to give an overview of the contents of the Urban Forest Management Plan. Talk about the development of the plan and what steps went into it, some of the guiding principles and key findings of the plan. Then talk a little bit about the updates to the, updates to the plans since our previous public hearing, and then talk about next steps. Next slide, please.
Laura, can you grab the picture of Abby and bring it up higher on the screen so we can see her? I wonder if there's a delay where she's not seeing the change.
No.
No, not muted. I'm just on the cover slide. If you could go to the next slide.
I'm on the vision statement slide.
Okay. On my screen, I'm just seeing still the first slide, but I can, I have it on my background. I can pull that up. So the, sorry about this, everyone. Thank you so much for accommodating this kind of hybrid meeting request. So for the vision statement of the plan, we created this vision statement to create what an ideal urban forest would look like for the city of Willetts, and the Urban Forest Management Plan is really meant to be a plan for the city to achieve that vision. And so the vision statement is as follows. The city of Willetts' urban forest will serve as a gateway to the redwoods and be a healthy, equitable, and sustainably funded resource that provides ecological, social, and economic benefits to all Willetts residents. Next slide. As part of developing the Urban Forest Management Plan, it was a comprehensive effort that really started out by taking into consideration stakeholder input through public surveys and community meetings, as well as interviews with staff members and elected officials. We completed a tree inventory to understand the number of city tree assets, as well as reviewed maintenance practices and standard details and policies and ordinances that affect trees. And then we reviewed the city's existing planning documents to ensure that the Urban Forest Management Plan could be best aligned with the, with the Urban Forest Management Plan. And we also reviewed internal operations to see how that it could be strengthened to improve tree management within the city. We took all of that information into account to understand the current status of the urban forest, and then we prepared a strategic plan that set forth goals and objectives and actions that would, that identify the need for the city, and also established a monitoring plan to ensure that the UFMP was effective and could be revised as needed. Next slide. A number of, four different guiding principles were established as part of the plan that I'll read through now. These guiding principles really provided a framework for how the management plan was written and to accommodate some of the key findings that we identified within the plan. The first is sufficient resources for the urban forest, that the city will provide financial and human resources to sustainably manage the urban forest. Sustainable and resilient urban forest, that the urban forest will be prepared for changing environmental conditions brought on by climate change. Expanding the urban forest, canopy cover will be increased above current levels for all residents and stakeholders. And protect and preserve the urban forest, that city policies and ordinances will contribute to large healthy trees, both on public and private property. Next slide. As part of the plan, we identified a number of different key findings, and we're going to highlight eight. And these are really areas where the city can target in terms of where their urban forest is and where it might want to be in the next 30 to 40 years. The first key finding was that the city has an aging tree inventory. Of the 425 trees that we identified in the city's inventory, approximately one-third of the trees were reaching the end of their life in immature state, and these trees must be replaced as they mature to ensure environmental benefits continue. Additionally, we identified budget limitations that funding levels at their current levels really only allow for reactive tree maintenance, which is more costly in the long term, and that the city could consider allocating funding to enable trees to be proactively managed rather than reactively managed. The city experiences staffing constraints, and from competing priorities really make it difficult for the current staff to complete adequate tree maintenance. And we identified that Willetts has two and a half fewer FTEs involved with urban forest management when compared to cities of similar size. And we also identified that Red Grove Park will need to be planned for, given that over 25% of the city's tree inventory is located in Red Grove Park, and these trees have varying health conditions and a history of site failures that will really be important to place management really at the center of that important, important resource within the city. And we recommend completing a tree risk assessment of all Red Grove Park trees. That can help tree managers prioritize maintenance actions moving forward. Next slide. Additional key findings, we identified that canopy cover is low. Canopy cover in the urban areas of the city is low, resting at about 16%, and given that the city is in a forested area, this is why we consider it to be low. And the city may need to, because the city only has so much land that it owns, in order for the city to be able to increase canopy cover, it may need to encourage residents to plant trees on private property to meet canopy wide, citywide canopy goals. We also learned that a community engagement outreach approach is needed, that residents place a high value on these trees, but they may not understand their part, the part they play in the city's urban forest. Also, in terms of management practices, the city should consider defining a strategy to prune trees that require urgent maintenance. And following this prioritization, the city could establish a five to seven year pruning cycle for all trees, which is aligned with current industry best practices. And the final key finding, that the city lacks a policy that stipulates the responsible party for tree maintenance and management, and also damage caused to public and private property. And so the city could consider adopting an ordinance that clearly defines this responsibility and who should be responsible for it. Next slide. As part of all of the guiding principles and the key findings and the various analyses that we conducted, we identified five strategic plan goals to implement, which includes urban forest sustainability, funding the urban forest, community engagement, planning and development, and tree management. And each of these goals, within each of these goals contains strategies that focus on certain sectors, and then they also include a number of information that we gathered from community members, as well as recommendations that resulted from the analyses that we conducted. And within each strategy, these contain objectives that prioritize actions needed to meet these goals. The strategic plan is really meant to establish a plan for the city to take to be able to meet that vision statement over the next 30 to 40 years, and meeting the vision statement will require a city, will require a commitment to the city to achieve these goals. Next slide. Wanted to highlight a few updates from the previous public hearing that we heard and incorporated within to the final version of the plan. The first was that we wanted to clarify that the species diversity recommendations that we included are not meant to justify removal of healthy trees, and so we added a sentence that clarified that. We also, the one that we clarified that areas for prior, that there were certain areas that should be prioritized for our risk review of trees. This can help highlight where to put certain resources for these review, and largely that will take place at Red Grove Park. As Dusty mentioned, we also created that tree maintenance responsibility graphic that I showed on the right side of this slide. The maintenance sets forth, the responsibility in this graphic includes those for street trees and park trees, as well as emergency situations, and that's now included in the plan. We also included a draft tree, a draft municipal tree ordinance, which could be considered for future adoption. And then finally, the Urban Forest Management Plan and technical assessment were reproduced in full graphics layout. Next slide. In terms of next steps for the Urban Forest Management Plan, we hope the city can consider adopting the Urban Forest Management Plan as it provides a framework for how the city can improve its urban forest management program. Also prioritize objectives within the plan as these build consensus on the highest priority issues to tackle that will deliver the most impact. And finally, implementing the recommendations within the plan. The city can consider developing additional resources to support implementation of the UFMP recommendations, as well as ensuring accountability for the UFMP by establishing a timeline to accomplish these individual tasks. Next slide. I want to thank you all so much for having me here today, and I am happy to take any questions.
I guess when I reviewed this, it kind of, it's a lot of information, and the first thing I thought of was, yeah, we don't have people, and how are we going to pay for this? And is there money out there, grants or something out there that we can leverage with our own funding to go after to do this? Because, I mean, it sounds like this is a best practices sort of thing, and in a perfect world, we want to keep our trees and make sure that we plant new trees, et cetera, but when I see that we're below the amount of staffing we need for this program, I'm just concerned how we would pay for this. So I guess that's my question. Does adopting this allow for some sort of funding source in the future that we could leverage?
Dusty, is that a question you want me to fill out?
Go ahead and answer that question.
Need to respond there.
Any funding sources that we might be able to take advantage of, especially recognizing that we're potentially adopting this to serve the forest.
Great, yes. So thank you for your question. There are a number of different grant opportunities, especially provided by CAL FIRE, that is, that really open up once a city adopts an urban forest management plan. And so we see this as the next key step in being able to open the door for some of this additional funding. Similarly, throughout the plan, we included an additional chapter that highlights different funding opportunities that the city could consider applying for through different grants that can enable the city to receive additional funding and really be able to meet some of those staffing challenges that we did highlight throughout the plan.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the council? Councilmember Strong? Stransky? Vice Mayor Connie?
I had one question. If we, if we adopted the Urban Forest Management Plan, would we also be adopting the ordinance or would that come to us at a later date?
Yeah, that's a great question, Mayor. So no, that's in the technical assessment as a sample document, so it is something that was vetted with our staff. I think there's some fine tuning that'll happen based on some further staff input, as well as obviously a future public hearing and council input. But in adopting the Urban Forest Management Plan tonight, you are not adopting the sample ordinance that's included in it.
Perfect. I wanted to make sure we had an opportunity for a hearing.
We didn't sneak that in.
Hearing and some further input. Okay. That's what I was looking for. Thank you. Thank you for your work on this project. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address us on this item? I see shaking heads. No? All right. I'll bring it back to council. If there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Stransky?
I think that it's a really neat plan, and I was really surprised. When I got to the section that had the, what the people fought, the one thing that came to my mind was for a private person to get a tree is that they have to water it. And that will be a holdup for some people that can't afford it. I mean, if they're going to start planting, we start planting trees and stuff, because that's the one thing that the assessment said that was a concern to our citizens was the amount of water that it would take to maintain the tree. But I really But I really liked the plan, and I thought it was a really good idea. And I'm really for it, to do it. And I had mentioned before that we need an arborist, you know, to hire a group of people or, you know, people that do that. And I think we need to do that, especially with the trees that we have planted downtown and, because they need to be pruned the right way in the first five or six years to get them to grow correctly. So I'm very much for this. Thank you. And I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Can I add something to? Motion in a second. Any comment?
I just also wanted to point out that in the last several years, we had some pretty big tree trauma in Willets, particularly right across the street at Bud Snyder City Park. And what we saw was deferred maintenance quickly becoming a situation where we had a park that was essentially clear cut, and we lost all of our trees. And Farmer's Market left because it became a pretty unpleasant environment during peak summer hours. So I think the benefit of adopting this plan is that we really set ourselves up for not having a situation like that again, and recognizing that trees not only have financial value, as pointed out in this plan, but have emotional value to our residents. And it's our responsibility to make sure that we're being good stewards of those trees. I really appreciate Dusty's comments that this is the first step, and that our next steps will be to actually codify what we're reading in this plan. So I hope we will all be supportive and looking for ordinances to back this up and make this real for our community.
Yeah, we'll have a responsibility to budget.
Yeah.
Or find grants that will help support our goal in these efforts. And I was just thinking back, it's been a while, but I believe you and I both had the opportunity to participate in a meeting or two and give some input on this particular plan. It's been a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I do remember hearing just what Councilmember Stransky said, people expressing concerns about the cost of watering, as well as the cost of maintaining trees on their properties. So making sure that our ordinance takes that into account when we get to that point. And I think our public hearing will afford that opportunity too.
And I did want to point out that funding opportunities are actually listed in one of the appendices at the end of the plan.
Yes. Thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second. If there's no further comment, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries, and we will move on to item 9B. Approve our reclassification of the existing water plant operator meter reader position with the title of water billing meter reader, and approve a budget revision to include the reclassified position and job title effective November 10th, 2022, representing staff member. His human resources manager, Karen Stevenson.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Haven't been up here in a while, so I'm glad to be here today to go through the proposed above reclassification of the existing water plant operator meter reader position with the new title of water biller meter reading, and approve the budget revision to include the reclassified position and job title. We have a fairly new finance staff, and they recently been going through deep dives in their department processes to determine what was working well and which processes needed to be improved or revamped in order to provide quality customer services to consumers and account holders. One of the areas that needed to be strengthened is between the utility billing and the water department regarding the process of how the meters are read, the handheld device that is used, providing quality customer service, which includes transmitting billing and providing accurate billing. Currently, there's one reader reader who reads the meters for two weeks, and the rest of the month, that individual is in public works. So it's 50% in enterprise and 50% in the general fund. And in the event situations arise, there's problems with bills, that person has to be pulled from their distribution tasks and sent back out into the street. This really is a full-time job, we believe, reading the meters and reclassifying it is one of the solutions to barriers that we're having. And the beauty of it is it does not increase staffing, because we have an incumbent there that is there at the moment, and he will fill that reclassified position. In the event that the position is vacated, then we wish to change the class designation to a lower level, which will save the city some money there. Any questions that you might have?
I have a question. So essentially, if you have an employee who's serving a dual function now, and you are going to move this employee to be fully committed to meter reading, are you going to have a shortage in public works where that person has been doing half duty?
I have been working with Scott Herman, the Public Works Director, in regards to that. We feel the need is, is to focus on the customer service and the billing at the moment. The particular employee that's in that current position does have experience and knowledge on water leaks and so on. So down the road, yes, that is a possibility. But for now, we want to focus on strengthening the customer reaction and making sure that, you know, we're providing quality service to our customers.
Thank you.
Would this be the person that if there was a water leak, that they would go out and be our front person with the customer?
Yes.
And so this is the person that would go out and explain to them, this is why you're, this is what you can do, this is what we can do from the city end to find your leak?
Exactly. Because he does have that experience and knowledge. So he'll be able to share with them what needs to be done and why.
And also, building on that theme, so what we're trying to do, like was noted in the statement, the finance department has gone through a complete revision. And unfortunately, Manny couldn't be here to explain, but I think we have warped the council through what we're doing with the front counter, the front desk, utility billing. And we recognize that, let's be honest, utility billing and providing those utilities are one of our core functions. And as we organize the utility billing staff, we recognize that we were doing a disservice, providing good customer service on the customer end of things. We recognize that a lot of times, people or residents or account holders were having, you know, they saw a wide swing in their monthly invoice, or they had a leak. And, you know, most, that's a very dramatic experience. Most people don't understand how public utilities work and the mechanism behind it. And we recognize that we were not relating good information at that point of contact at the residents. And this is an opportunity to fix that. So that staff person can explain, try to calm the situation down. And then when they come to the billing desk, then we can help them and identify the issue, offer them solutions, and move that, move the situation along so they can get the service reestablished, or we can get a crew out there, depending if it's, you know, it's something on our side of the line.
I think it's a really good idea for the simple reason that when you, you know, you're really not aware maybe sometimes that you have a leak. And so consequently, when you get your bill for 300 bucks, say, you know, you're saying, holy mackerel, and so the first thing you do is call. And you want the answer then, because that's $300 as it's rolling around. And so I think it's a really good decision that you guys have come up with. Thank you.
So then, on the budgetary side, like once again, as it was commented, the current position is split between essentially public works, which would be funded through general fund activity, and then utility, or the enterprise fund for the billing side of it. This new position would fall solely on the enterprise fund equation, which is, we have a better means to keep that fund populated and utilize more than the general fund. The general fund is, you know, stretched harder, it's made to work harder, and that's what is being supported by the Measure K. So we're looking at some internal changes as well.
All right, Councilmember Strong and then Gonzalez.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think I just wanted to follow up a little bit on what Grant was asking, and that is, is there going to be an impact on the public work staffing level down the road here? Are we creating a need there? We do believe that this individual that is currently fulfilling that position can be utilized to assist, but their main focus is going to be, you know, with the water billing department. But, you know, we are, as you saw on our last council meeting, when you saw those pipes and you see what the groundwater is, there's, I mean, that, those issues have to be addressed. We do have other individuals that have the same talents that can do that portion, and he is available if needed. In the event that we find out that that becomes a problem, then it will have to be readdressed.
Okay. Thank you.
There is, let's be honest, there may be a scenario where, that a new position or a new hiring is responsible, is earmarked for public works. That may happen. It depends on how, if the council approves the job description and the classification tonight, then we have to apply it. And then essentially, the incumbent person, staff person, has that opportunity to look at that position, say that, yes, this is what I want to accomplish for the city, or no. If no, then it opens up some opportunities for us that we may be looking at additional staff person on the public work side of things. But we're not looking at that now. There's a couple of pieces that need to fall into place, and we don't have those right now. The other thing is, is that this job description may go unfilled, and we're still kind of working behind the scenes. We'd like to see this opportunity, because of all the justification that we put forward, but it may not go filled, may not be filled in the near future until we work through the union requirements, and working with Scott, and working out what's the best for the crew that we have.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
I just wanted to ask if, as we, it seems to be a perpetual drought, that this individual could do outreach and education with the public as part of their duties? Would that be something?
I would let that defer to Mr. Herman.
I think it would be more, maybe not. Busy enough. Turn it around now.
Okay.
Well, I mean, fair point. And maybe, maybe that's more of, you know, we do that at the front counter. Maybe we can prepare some of the materials, get some materials from the state, and have that available, and just build our knowledge base in that we can present that information to customers as they come forward.
Councilmember Strong?
Well, just on that same point, I think educating people on how they can conserve water is always nice, ongoing service that we can provide, because if they're, you know, one thing, they can reduce their utility bill, but it's also really good for our environment to use water very wisely. And if there's any, if that position is going to have a lot of interaction with public, then that's a good opportunity.
That's kind of where I was headed.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you reaffirm your position?
I had the opportunity to meet with some water department staff, as well as a few people in the community, and I feel like this helps to solidify some of the concerns and respond to their concerns in making us more efficient. So I support the idea.
So open it up to the public. Anybody from the public? Nope. All right, bring it back over here, and I'll entertain a motion.
I saw move. I'll second.
All right. You have a motion in a second. Any further comment? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
All right. The motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to department monthly reports, which are typically presented at the second meeting of the month. But Kathy, do you have anything for us from the airport?
So, excuse me, Madam Mayor, we don't have any for this, for this agenda. We just covered the monthly reports two weeks ago. So we're going to roll two months into the December meeting.
Okay.
We have great staff.
Nobody from any department?
The big accomplishments in the last two weeks, it would be kind of hard to put it again in the packet, so.
All right. So we should assume that no department has comment tonight.
If there's staff here, department heads, if you have any comments, you want any clarification, they're more than willing and I can answer.
There's a lot over the last two weeks. I went to Hawaii, so.
But he came back, so, I mean.
I thought maybe there might be some kind of verbal update, but that's all right. We will give a pass.
I'm sure if there's any questions you have, I'd be delighted to answer them.
All right. All right. Chief Lizarago, we saw that you've been very busy. Anything from the police department?
No, we're, coming along. Our staffing levels are slowly rising, and had some new, probably seen some new faces, very enthusiastic, very appreciative of the opportunity to work in Willets, and they all have expressed repeatedly their commitment to Willets. So they can't wait to get more into community outreach and do the things that we want them to do.
I had a member of the public come up to me just a few days ago and ask, what's up with citizens getting pulled over for traffic stops? And I said, well, what kind of traffic stops? Well, you know, speeding, not wearing a seatbelt, talking on the phone. And I said, well, those are all things that you should get pulled over for. Well, why are they pulling over now? I said, well, I do believe you asked us, requested that the city staff up, and we are staffed up, and we've responding, we're responding to the community's need to make sure that we have a safe community. So this is all for safety sake.
It is. And speeding was one of the main things that I would get phone calls on. Why aren't you doing that? Why aren't you doing this? But, you know, kind of like, careful what you ask for sometimes. We may be guilty of one, so.
Yes, that's kind of the situation. So yes, we're fully staffed, following the safety laws. All right. Well, are we fully staffed, or we've got one last position, right?
No, we've got, we're one sergeant down, Sergeant Brady's departure left us in the sergeant vacancy. I sit back at police officer position. We are looking at, well, we have a recruit in the academy right now, who's doing well. She just finished the first of three modules, passed all her tests and all that, so she's very ready to go to the second one. She'll be coming up tomorrow, just to make some supplies and just meet with us and be around town. And then we're looking to send another gentleman who currently resides in Lake County, but is looking to relocate and send him to the academy hopefully in January to San Jose. And we're trying to see if we can get back out there in time. But he's got good life experience, very mature, very committed to public service, wants to do this, start his own corporate career here in Willets. So we're, he was very impressive to the interview panel, to the person. They all said, yeah, we need this kind of individual here in our community. So I'm very impressed with the comments and his presentation. So once we get him on board, then we'll pretty much, I'm still looking for a school resource officer. I would very much like to get somebody in our school, the superintendent, the new one, is committed to helping us out with that as they have in the past. It's just a matter of finding the right person. Currently, my crew, I think, is a little green to put into that kind of assignment. I'd like them to have a little bit more experience, but it's also a matter of finding the right kid, somebody that wants to be the school's, wants to be around kids, and who knows how to deal with many problems. So we're still looking around for that, and still looking for a bit to see if they can figure this out.
All right. Thank you for that update. All right, moving on to city council announcements, communications, and reports. I'll start with Councilmember Strong.
As usual, tomorrow is going to be EFC, and the following, I hope I've got it in the right order. I don't have my calendar with me. But one of my groups meets tomorrow, and the other one meets a week from tomorrow. And I don't have anything else to report about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I sat in on LAPCO, but since I'm the alternate, I just kind of sat in. And I did it virtually since I wasn't going to be needed. And they had a joint public workshop for the city of Ukiah and the Ukiah Valley Sanitation District Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence updates. So they've been working with both, they were kind of, I guess the analogy I can give, they were kind of in a situation like we were with Brook. they were kind of in a situation like we were with Brooktrails in a lawsuit, both of them, and they have put their differences aside and are working together with LAPCO on their project now. There seems to be kind of a spirit of cooperation that's happening down there now.
Oh, that's a good thing.
Yeah, and so it was kind of nice to see that all parties involved, or everybody is basically thanking everybody for their cooperation, and things are moving forward. And Ukiah's working on their general plan also, so that kind of adds kind of something into the mix. So they, as they move forward, I think the idea is that eventually the sanitation district will kind of be out of business, so that's the, as Ukiah expands its borders, but that's still a couple years away, and I think they're planning for that as part of this project. And so.
Okay.
So that was, and then my other role of League of Cities, they haven't, I think I'm waiting to see whether I'm appointed to the Public Safety Committee, and I don't think they've set any dates yet for any meetings yet, so.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Stransky?
The two things that I do is, one is the, I want to get on going on the chamber to help it get going, and so I just think that would be a good step, and we haven't had, or that I could attend to. They've changed from Wednesday to Tuesday or Thursday, yeah, one of the two days.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Connie?
I attended MCAG meeting Monday, and it was a rather straightforward meeting. I'm just pulling up my agenda here to see if I have any special comments. We received a report on the state of finances at MCAG. They received their triennial performance audits, and everything looked good, unqualified audits all around for both MCAG and MTA. And other than that, it was pretty much business as usual. It was a quick meeting.
All right. Thank you. I haven't attended any meetings with anything significant to report back, mostly just small committee meetings and lots of community input. I did receive a question and a concern from the community in regards to public safety about the traffic. So during the return to in-person events, like the local schools, there were lots of modifications due to COVID protocols. And over in the Brookside Elementary community, they still have a fair amount of COVID restrictions, which is impacting our city streets. And so residents over there are still experiencing challenges of getting access in and out of their property before and after school. There's complaints from citizens about not being able to go onsite at the schools and pick up their children still. They have to park on city streets, walk in and wait, and now winter's coming, and so that's increasing more kids having to walk in the rain, crossing when we already have congestion. So there's been requests made of me to see what I can do to find out if the city or this council has any ability to help support a safer traffic plan. Maybe that begins with a conversation with the school superintendent about what their long-term plan is, or, you know, maybe a better way to help manage that traffic flow. Could there be any modifications? The other schools in...
Can I add something?
Yeah, well, it's unified or doing things differently.
Well, I don't know if it's, other than parents not being allowed on the grounds per se, but I think that they've always kind of stopped folks from driving through at certain points so that the buses can come in, and I don't think that's changed. I think that's the same.
So you're correct. The buses, I'm actually one of those buses that comes through, and we get there 15 minutes before school gets out. And then the idea is that when school gets out at 2:30, that all buses and vans are moved out of the way, and parents can pull through, which creates a traffic jam. But the other part of the traffic jam is created because you can no longer walk on campus and get your children, so all the people that are waiting are parked on the city streets nearby as well. And so you pretty much have the entire, anybody who's not getting on a bus, who's getting picked up, all those parents, and it clogs up the streets. Councilmember Stransky and I were even talking about how it clogs up streets within several blocks in all directions, and even when you're exiting the Brookside Elementary and you're trying to come back out, you're stuck in a traffic jam and forced to go towards Spruce to find any kind of relief, to find your way out of there. And so just wondering, I know we have a traffic safety committee?
We do, and that's certainly in line with, I can put in the, the next one. I think our next meeting will probably not be in December, but beginning of January. And then, I mean, I've experienced, you know, a house before a, I'm stuck in that for a few more extra minutes, but I'd like to, before I go to the superintendent, maybe I could meet with the principal at Brookside and see if there's anything there that we can, I know she's asked us in the past to monitor traffic as far as speed, so we kind of park them, maybe do four ways up there at Redwood or Mendocino, Spruce. I've done it myself a few times, and it's, you know, obviously people pay attention and slow down and stop. But the traffic itself, unless it's kept flowing because of the loop it's in in the residential area, it's not even congested when everybody comes at the same time. So, but I'll be with her if there's anything we can do to work on in the meantime.
Yeah, I think that the request of the community that would help alleviate that is when will they start allowing some of those families to pick up so they can get their children and then get in their vehicles and leave and remove that congestion a bit quicker? Because that congestion's about 30 minutes.
Yeah, 30 minutes or so.
Every morning.
I was worried that they weren't being, a lot of them were just parking there because they didn't want to deal with traffic, because I've seen them park, and they won't get to.
Yeah, no, they have, they have to stop before that last speed bump. All the other schools, you can go on campus, but that's the one school that you can't. And so that's, it's creating, yeah, that would help, so.
I'll be with her.
It was a community, community concern, and I know that there's a petition that's being circulated and such, and so I do know that there will be members eventually coming for us. So if we could get ahead of it and maybe get some information, that would be good.
It takes up about four blocks.
It does.
Of people parking, and it's just, it's a mess. And, you know, people are trying to, and the people that go from Brookside to Bechtel, to Bechtel Grove, not Bechtel Grove, to Glosser, you know, come that way and then zigzag because they got one kid here, one kid here, and one kid there, and they're trying to make the whole move, and it really makes a mess. In fact, the garbage man said that he comes extra 30 minutes early just to get out of the speed area, because it's a mess. People are really going, you know, they're trying to cover the distance.
Sure. And they use Spruce and High almost, something like that eastbound turn on High.
Yep.
Yeah. You can't exit on Mendocino. If you're trying to come back towards Main Street, then it's impossible to pass through there, so, yeah. All right, what about some good and welfare? Do we have any good and welfare? What are we thankful for? It's November.
Elections are over.
Elections are over. There we go. That's some good and welfare.
I'm very thankful for Adventist Howard Hospital, where I spent a lot of time last night.
Oh, no.
But we're so glad that we have that in our community.
That's something to be thankful for. Yes, and we had two council members that are going to stay with us for four more years, and they're thankful that they did not have to run a reelection campaign.
It's true. It's true.
All right. With that, we will adjourn at 7:30 PM, and I thank you all, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
See you next month.